All right, at 6:30, I would like to call the order. The November 10, 2021 Policy Committee Meeting. Here, here. The first item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the October 19, 2021 meeting. Does anyone have a motion on that item?
Motion approved.
Second that.
Motion and second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. The next item is the specific policies that we're going to do tonight. So, do you want to walk through them like we did last time, Brenda? Is that the best way to do it?
Sure.
And then, so I guess we start out then with the 144.3?
With the two from last time.
Conflict of interest? Yeah, because that's the one that we tabled.
Yeah.
To get some additional clarification from, was it Neola or the lawyers?
The attorney on that one.
Okay. And that was because we had an issue where we always wanted to clarify that it didn't apply to campaign contributions that were legally obtained, is that right?
Correct.
So, the attorney has added this line here. And then this last, this last paragraph here, which is more relevant to campaign finance.
Cool.
So, just so that you know, I also heard back from Neola this morning, and the language I received was almost exactly what you have in that last paragraph. So, I went on to the site here to add that in and found that you already had this there, so.
They copied it from us.
Yeah? Good, good, good.
I'll send you that bell, Richard.
Yeah. That was good. All right, the next one is the public comment. Public comment at board meetings, and Richard actually put some additional language in here, which you can see.
Right, that was addressing some of the issues that came up last time, to clarify. I thought that was good.
So, that, so the language I put in, as you can see, in A, and then I moved H up to B to try and make it clear that we're talking about, A is mostly about when public comment can occur during the meeting, and B is about what the comment can be about. Again, in a viewpoint-neutral manner.
Right.
But was that in there before? B? That was down there.
The B was H.
That was H.
Yes.
But again, moving it up so that the two appear consecutively. Also, it's important to stress in reviewing this, again, with the statutes and so forth, that you need, you should put in there, again, not only the comment section of the agenda, but the comment section of the notice agenda, because the public has to have fair notice of what they are, what comment, what the topics of the comments can be. So, at a meeting agenda, you can change the order and such, add a meeting, as you well know, but you cannot change the content. And so, we want to make sure that it's, you're explaining what topics the comment can be on in your noticed agenda.
Okay. And so, when we post, we can say comments only on these actual items, or we can say just general comments are accepted. It gives the president that flexibility.
And I see that he changed order of business to meeting agenda, because I think a lot of people don't know what order of business is.
Sure, correct.
An actual meeting agenda. So, that makes it a lot more clear. Oh, sure.
Kevin, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yeah, just to clarification, the portion in A, which says "and/or at the discretion of the presiding officer," would that mean that, and I think we have done it at meetings where there's really not, it's such a short agenda, there's really not a public comment section, but could there be a time where there's a hot topic on the agenda and the presiding officer decides not to hold public comment? It looks to me like that could occur, and I don't know if that's what we would want as a board to give.
Yeah, is that, but is that A, though, is that, that's the when during the meeting?
When.
So, it would be as, it would be as noted in the agenda. So, if it's on the agenda that there's public comment, I don't think the president could skip it. Is that, is that right?
That's correct. The "and/or" refers to the fact that if you have a public comment period, that you would take comment at that time. However, later on in the meeting, perhaps, when the item comes up, maybe someone else walks into the meeting, maybe there's a question as the board is debating it and they want clarification, somebody knows something in the audience, they could call on somebody to please, you know, we would, we're going to take further comments on this issue. No one spoke to it during the public comment period, but we'd be interested from the people who are here, what you think about this particular idea. So, this gives you the when, you must have it during the noticed portion, whatever you notice, that's when you must have it. But the "or" allows you to also have it at another time at the discretion of the presiding office.
Well, it's kind of one of, okay, that makes sense.
But only on topics that are noticed.
Only on top, let's say there's an eight-item agenda, but only two items notice for public comments. So, the other six are not, it's on the agenda and going to get discussed, but the public's not able to comment on it.
Yes, now, remember that there's a difference between public comment, which is essentially open mic, and there's a difference between that and a board member questioning someone who's present at the meeting in the audience. Board members can question anytime, some of the audience. Oh, I see, our calculus teacher is here, we have a question about this, as we discuss this, what do you think about such and such? That's always permissible, that's not public comment. That's, that's board member's discretion of being able to question someone in the audience. Public comment, remember, is open mic. And I also added in, just in that first sentence on the public comment section of the meeting, again, referring to the statute, because we want to make it very clear that we are doing this in accordance with the statute, which says the board may have a public comment period, as long as it's noticed. There is no requirement to have a public comment period.
Right, no, I understand that, I just, the word "open mic," I just want to clarify, that's not an open mic in the sense that a person can come and talk about any topic they want. It needs to be one of the, you can talk about the items that are noticed for public comment, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, it's kind of a limited open mic. You can talk about the topics that are noticed, not an open mic to talk about any other topic you want.
But then we could, in the agenda, the president could say, "Tonight I want comment, or we will accept comment on any topic that is within the jurisdiction of the district."
Yeah.
And then, that would be the night when they, people could come and talk about anything.
That would be, that would be on the agenda, so people know a topic at a meeting. That's important, yeah.
Yep.
That's important. Then the other thought on this overarching agenda would be a potential to discuss, like, open mic, true open mic listening sessions, once every quarter or something like that, truly anything that has to do with the district. We can't respond to it because we don't know what the topic's going to be, but to let people talk about any business of the district that they feel like a true open mic night.
Yeah, I know, that would, that would be a special meeting, right?
Special meeting, yeah.
Yeah, when boards do that, it's usually at a special meeting, or they have a community listening session prior to, like, for 15, 20, 30 minutes prior to the start of a meeting. Probably don't want to get into the habit of some regular board meetings, you have, talk about whatever you want, and yet other ones only talk at these specific items.
Yeah, be consistent.
So, the most people use that is they schedule those outside of a regular board meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, yeah, that's a separate issue, and I think that, to me, that makes sense to do that at some point. And then, because I think the main issue is just trying to, trying to make the meetings as efficient as possible.
No, I understand it, yeah, I just think that's an interesting concept, I think, where you raise it as a possibility. And I think something like that to allow people to voice their thoughts on any business, any topic of the school district is a good precedent to have.
Yeah.
To allow that now and then, it doesn't have to be every single meeting, because we want to keep efficiency in place, but to allow people to do that. In addition to the emails and phone calls and things like that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, because to me, the emails are just so much better, because you can think about them and.
Right.
I go back and knit lengths and stuff, yeah.
Well, I think the other thing is, if it's a meeting agenda, it's not really clear, we have to, it sounds like we have to get, and I forget if this is a policy, we have to get consensus if we want something as a topic to be discussed in the board meeting. So, let's say we're fielding a lot of emails on a certain topic, it's not on the agenda for an actionable item, so it's not on the agenda to be a topic of discussion, but a board member's like, hey, I really like to open this up. If people show up to the meeting, I just want to hear their thoughts on it that night. It doesn't seem like that's happening.
I don't think you can do that, because you have to know this.
You got to do it on the agenda.
Well, that's what I'm saying, how do we get it on the agenda?
Right, yeah, that's.
There's no.
Oh, that's like, that's the prior.
But it, doesn't it require consensus, like, can we look at that?
I think it's up to the board president.
So, if you wanted to bring up a topic and it's not posted, you could propose the topic, the board could.
Ahead of time. I can contact the president, say, hey, I'd really like this on the agenda, and have it be on the agenda, not be told it's not consensus, it's not going to be.
No, I think it's up to the president.
I agree. I thought you meant at the meeting, you could, you could suggest that, I would like, I like this topic on the next agenda, and the board, the president could say, well, let's discuss that, and make a whole of actual vote on that.
Well, because like, if we have this forum, then who's going to decide when we have the forum? And open.
Do you mean the listening session?
Yeah, the listening session.
I think we bring it back to the board, Rick has asked me to look at dates, so I'm looking at dates, available dates, and I'll share with him, and I guess it's going to come back to the board to see about your availability.
Yeah, because like, in my mind, I see that as like, big items like, you know, the building projects, and trying to really feel a lot of public input, and I think that's a great forum for that. But I also feel like, since I've been on the board, we've, you know, people have had comments, and it's a sprinkling of topics and not always aligned to the agenda, and it's never been an issue. But now, we're only on the agenda, and so we're cutting off that communication, I feel like. And I know we can go through the email, but I just, I think, I know we're in a climate right now where it's like intense with COVID and everything, but I just, I don't know. I just feel like we're responding to something that's temporary and not long-term, and I just, I know that our community members want to be heard at a board meeting and not just through email, so, I don't know.
So, I would take it up with Rick, the board president?
What I, I really like the idea of the open con, the open meeting, or separate from the board meeting, because sometimes I think when you, you know, we're preparing for a board meeting and you have public comment, first you never, if you get, you know, so many people wanting to comment on anything, you might limit people who are coming to the meeting to comment on something we're discussing, which you would never want to prevent someone from doing that. Plus, it's just really hard when it's bouncing all over the board and then get into the specifics of the meeting. So, to keep it somewhat separate and say, this is our time, come to us with anything, but we do have to make that available, I feel.
I just never saw it as an issue before, I guess, that's what I thought.
Right. Yeah, it's been that way.
It's been that way.
This isn't, I feel, I was looking at this, I, I mean, I look, I think like our school board website, I mean, we don't really have anything in here about, you know, to email us and what we can, you know, because even there's legalities of what we can and can't talk about, and I just.
Sure.
And it's not going to answer everything, but I think even to just make it more user-friendly to the public about, you know, come to us with emails, but we're going to, I don't know, it's just a suggestion, because I just looked at this and I'm like, it doesn't even talk about contacting, you know, the school board or anything.
Yeah, and I do like the idea of it happening the same night in the school board meeting, too, because I think, you know, if you're just putting in another date, you know, it's just adding more, and if we're trying to be conscientious of time, that makes sense to me. But, I don't know, I just, I just don't want us to get too far away from, if there's something that we want to have a discussion about or we want to feel comment on, that we just are not, you know, we don't have that course of action through this, I guess.
Yeah, I think Laura brings up a good point. If you did it the night of a board meeting, you probably have to do it in two tiers. The first, people who get to speak are topics that are on the public speaking agenda first. If it's sort of 20 minutes or, let's say, 30-minute session or something, they get to go first, and then if there's time, if time is left, say, okay, if you did it that way, any other topics.
10 minutes or whatever, yeah.
I know one thing that concerned me about it was, you're, it's the length of the meetings, and so when you get to the, you know, if you have a long public comment section, then you get to meeting, then you've got a closed session. By the time you get to that, I mean, we're all like spent, everyone is spent, and I don't know if we do our best thinking at that point. To me, I, I mean, I'm, I'm better, and just a personal thing, I'm better at the shorter, more focused approaches, and you can dedicate everything to this issue and, and address it, and then, you know, be home by 10.
I've noticed I drop off after an hour and a half.
Yeah.
My focus drops off, and I agree, we've tabled topics because they're just getting too late. And I'm like, God, he's tired, it's getting late, and so that's why I kind of like personally the, whatever cadence of a open mic, or not open mic, a listening session at a quarterly basis or something like that. And because then it's just a planned meeting, probably under an hour and a half, or maybe it's under an hour and a half to listen to any topic in this, regarding our schools, and it's not, doesn't drag us out to 11:30 at night where we're exhausted.
Yeah, it's a good conversation to continue to have, because what you're really talking about is just onboarding information from the public. And so, there are mechanisms within the system that we have that we're able to onboard. So, we're on a three-year cycle with school perception surveys, for example. So, every three years, we put surveys out to our students, we put surveys out to our parents, and we put surveys out to our staff, and we get a lot of information back from them that help us guide our efforts. And so, that is a mechanism where you can really measure a large, a number of community members or parents much more than you would get at a board meeting, and you can get a pulse on those items, whether it's greater interest and guidance. We want more career development, or whatever it may be, you get a larger number of questions. So, they really determine, okay, let's move that into some kind of a strategic effort. It's a little bit different than, than just having a listening session, but it is a means for us to gather information. So, there are mechanisms, that's just one, that are in the system that allow for community members to give us feedback.
I think both of those approaches, that approach or the listening session are both good inroads into future meeting discussion, agenda items. You know, to hear them and like, but of guidance, people really want a lot more guidance for their kids and careers options. Okay, that's a great topic to have for future meeting.
Yep, yep, yep.
Do that type of thing, and I don't, I'm not saying I have a solution, I'm just saying I'd like to see us get to that point where we do have these topics covered and open, you know.
Yeah, and this is, I think, I think it's kind of getting away from the Policy Committee here, but it's probably something more, because it's probably a conversation we should have with Rick, and I think, because he's the president, and I think he's, as you said, Todd, I think he wants to do these.
He does, yeah. So, I'm looking at them, and I think we're going to set a separate date. Having them, you know, maybe that's where we start first, just, you know, 90 minutes, whatever, it's two hours for a listening session on a non-board meeting night, and depending on how that goes, then perhaps in the future, you can have the listening session just prior to a board meeting, and you can alternate, you know, every third month you have something like that. So, you just get in this kind of cadence.
Yeah, potentially there's a night where there's not a huge agenda. Or should we tend to have huge agendas?
Yeah, we can structure it, yeah.
So, what would that look like based off this policy, if there was something that came up in between these quarterly sit downs?
Oh, this, it wouldn't be in here, this is for like regular board meetings, so it would be, what we would do is we would notice a special meeting.
No, I mean, this should allow for that, I mean, we could, couldn't we put on the agenda if we wanted to have a conversation at the meeting on a topic?
This allows that.
This allows that, right?
Yeah, yeah, regular board meeting, yeah.
Correct, correct.
Okay. And then, what in this policy clarifies how that topic could be added? It just go to the president?
Ultimately, the president approves the agenda, so that's, that's how it would work. And if you want more discussion on a topic, you could bring it up at a board meeting and propose like, the next board meeting, I would like to have this topic on the agenda, and the board could discuss it and make it take action on it. That has happened in the past.
Yeah.
So, a board member at a meeting could ask?
Correct.
Even if it's not on the agenda?
Because.
To, to turn the next.
Future meeting.
Next meeting or something, so it's got to get noticed then, so then the vote gets taken, is that the process?
That's how we've done it in the past, yeah.
All right, that's a good reasonable solution to me to do it that way, so.
Hi, anything else on this?
I have a question later on in this, and just a clarification, again, I'm not a lawyer, so. It was talking about who can speak at a public section? What, where is that? You know, that, any district staff member, comma, resident, comma, parent of a student, or student enrolled in the district. Does that mean that a parent of a student in the Cedarburg School District, or a parent of a student? I know what we intended to mean, but I don't know legally what this means, because could it be a parent of a student in Grafton or Port Washington?
Oh, a parent of any kind.
Yeah, because it's a parent of a student, I don't know.
The way that was written is, you're using the word district, we're on C, using the word district to modify everything that follows, and that's the confusion, so maybe you want to say any district staff member, district resident, parent of a district student.
Right, yes.
So, just keep repeating the word district in there, so that it's very clear that you're really, to clarify your point.
Yeah, I just did once to say, I am a parent of a student, just district district.
And no, no, it's parent of a district student.
Right, I think, yeah, so maybe put the word district in front of each of those, might clarify it maybe.
That's a good catch.
Yes, that's the one that I had.
I don't think you need to enroll as.
He doesn't say that one, yeah, we don't need that one. It's capitalized terms, so, okay.
Or wouldn't it be, or parent of, because you're saying.
Parent of a district student? That would think we.
Yeah, that would come up, open enrollment students. Open enrollment, parent of open enrollment students.
Yeah.
Should it say a public comment portion of the meeting?
Public.
Public.
Public comment.
Comment portion, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point, too.
Is that right, or did I reading that wrong?
Public comment section, yeah.
Well, the whole meeting's a public meeting, so you're.
I bet this is up for close.
Yeah, it's up for close.
Good.
Don't you want to get rid of that comment after "of a district student," because it's kind of like a new part, it's like "and/or", because it's a parent of a district student, or, because I'm reading it as it's a parent of a district student or a student enrolled in the district, not a parent of a student.
Oh, yeah, where's Conrad?
And that's beyond my English range, so I don't know.
A district staff member, comma, district resident, comma, parent of a district student, comma, or a student enrolled in the district may comment during, so there's no comma after. It shouldn't be a comma.
No comment there.
Yeah, because may is a verb, it's a correct, comma, good catch.
Is that comma deleted, I can't see.
Yeah, still.
All right, cool, are we, are we all set on this one?
I think so.
Good, awesome.
1662.
Is this?
This is the and, and her asking.
Oh, this is, so this is 1662, 3362, 4362, and 5517, are those all together, is that right?
Yes.
And that was, we had a question about the, that term, that term hate speech, and we got advice on that, right, Richard?
That's correct, yeah, it's, there is, you're, taking it out is just fine, it's already covered in the policy. It's really redundant having in there.
Okay.
Okay.
Any one issues? All right, cool, that was four.
That was four. So, 4120. Which one did you say? 4120. Women of Massachusetts.
Yeah, they have anything.
We didn't have anything.
So, we're good with that one?
Yep.
4120.04, pretty much the same. Yep. Fine with that one.
Yep.
4122. Richard, these are the ones that we can't really do much with. Right, we can't touch, yeah.
Federal.
Yep. Okay, same with 4122, I think. Yeah, yeah.
I think, I think in that, the 22 ones, the 1422, 3122, is, you had a question last time about the mention of a Wisconsin organized militia. That was the question that you had.
I don't think that was us.
I would remember that question.
Last meeting.
I don't, I don't have anything on that.
Our last meeting?
We've said a lot of things here at this meeting, but I've never heard the word militia come up at a policy meeting, Richard.
Okay, never mind.
So, same with 4122.02, 4123, those are all policies we can't really touch, right, Richard?
That's right. Those are all done with the Office of Civil Rights.
Yep.
4161. That one's fine.
Yeah, I don't have anything on that.
That's a new addition.
I don't have anything until the 5, 5,000.
Me neither.
Me neither.
Okay, well, then why don't we go all the way down there? As long as you're okay with that one, because that's on you, super heavily required, what is it? All right, so 5500.01 is a brand new policy.
So, Todd, you didn't, did you have any?
Nope, we haven't gone through them yet, we're okay with all of them, too.
I had a question on them, just from, you know, with my parents being virtual, or my kids being virtual sometimes last year, there was somewhat of an issue of keeping screens on, and I know some school districts required that, and Cedarburg didn't, and there were comments at a PTO meeting about how frustrating it was for kids when a teacher would call on a student, and then everyone would have to wait for the student to kind of quick get their screen on. So, I don't know from an administration point or a teaching standpoint what the views are on that, but.
Would that be leaving the virtual classroom during class without the teacher's permission?
Well, how do you know if you're on the screen if they're in the classroom? If they take the video off, I guess, that's what I'm saying, the video off.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I see, they turn off the camera.
They can do that?
And I've heard of people posting, you know, pointing into the ceiling.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're just a picture of a ceiling, and they don't know if they're there.
How do you know?
Right.
Their picture's not on the camera, their, the camera's not on their face, Laura, is that what you're saying?
I believe, right, I believe they can turn the camera off.
Yeah, turn it off.
Well, that would, I think that is it, leaving the virtual classroom during class without the teacher's permission.
Well, you're still listening, you're not, you're in the classroom, you're just.
The camera's off.
The camera's off, so the teacher.
So, we can change the wording there.
Well, I don't know, I mean, because were they doing it to save bandwidth or anything, like, what's the?
Well, that could be some, that could be an issue.
Yeah.
Or without the teacher's permission, you put in there something and say.
Yeah, leave that up to the teachers, I think.
Okay. So, we're good with that then anymore?
On that very last one, where we talked about H without the teacher's permission, that should be a period at the end, not a semicolon.
Thank you.
Laura, let's hope we don't have to use the word.
I, yes.
I agree, 100%. What's the next 5,000 you have a question on?
I had 5511.
All right, well, that's the next one.
All right, I had under, let me find it here. For expressive dress may not be protected speech if it involves for number one and two. I feel the last ferment hatred of others, I feel that's a very generic sentence, like, sentence in there. I don't know what that really means, I just, I would leave, I would say to leave a period after violence.
Yeah, I have that, too, because it's too, it's too subjective.
Are we all in agreement?
Sure, you can do that.
Did I hit? Why did we have to add this stuff to A and B? This is, wait a second. Trying to think which A and B, I wrote these notes a long time ago.
It's probably the first two.
Richard, should this obscenity start with A?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Shit, I don't know what I was talking about, okay, let's see here, so, the first one is A, present a hazard to the health, including by way of, oh, yeah, so I, again, I was a little concerned of. Present a hazard to the health, including by way of, oh yeah, so I, again, I was a little concerned about the subjectivity. Including by way of communicating threats of harm or depictions of harmful conduct directed at others, very subjective, is there a way to maybe make that? Do we need it, I guess, I mean, uh, is the first question, like what's the intent there, and then, um, is there a way to make it less subjective?
So is just the first part of the sentence, present a hazardous to the, present a hazard to the health or safety of the student? And herself, or to the others in the school, period, what, do we have to have including?
This one we had before.
Well, like the first half is interesting, cause it, it seems like, um, more like physical, right, like the shirt had like spikes on it or something.
Yeah.
And then the second half, to me, is kind of addressing harassment, which is already addressed in our harassment policy, is the way I understand that. Cause they're basically saying like, or just, you know, be harmful in the, in the way of harassment, communicating a threat, yeah, right?
I don't know.
That's the way I understood that, and then also with two, like that's, is that what they're trying to do, like is that what they're trying to, like, address?
This came out of the, uh, the Markazan T-shirt case, uh, in Wisconsin, that, um, became a landmark case actually in the United States. Um, and, uh, a year or two ago, and the, uh, the school district in that case, the school district insisted that the student who was wearing a gun rights test T-shirt. That was created just to test these rules, was in violation of, of the district's, um, dress code. And, um, the district took the bait without consulting the legal counsel, or, or good legal counsel. And then, um, and then what happened is it went to court, and the court, um, slammed the district for saying that there was nothing threatening. You know, the district was claiming it was threatening, and they said, how could it be threatening, it was, it is not there, you need, and that they needed to have language indicating that not only drug and alcohol T-shirts, but also, you know, lang-, uh, attire that was really threatening and intimidating was actually, um, you know, non-prohibited. And then you'd have to prove how it was threatening and intimidating. So it's all part of that court case, and all this language was revised in accordance with, um, that court case, as well as the Pennsylvania court case about the cheerleader who was, um, very upset that she wasn't picked for the varsity squad. And those both drew, both those cases got national attention and caused all this student dress code stuff to be rewritten.
Yeah, so it's, it, to me, it's very subjective, I mean, what is harmful conduct directed at others, and if one person's, um, harmful conduct is another one's celebration, some of these days, it's crazy.
Well, all, all, all have to cause a disruption, correct, Richard?
Well, later on in that policy, it talks about substantial disruption to the school environment, and that's really what it is. You'd have to prove that it's intimidating, and what happened in the Markazan cases, the student said it's intimidating, and then basically when they hashed it out in court, they kinda said, well, that's not intimidating. So that, that hashing out should have been done in the principal's office, not all the way, and not taking a hard line stance and going all the way to court. So principals run into this all the time, I find this offensive, what's offensive about it, what about this, what about that, and, and kinda work things out. But without this policy, I mean, as was mentioned, without this language, if you're just talking health or safety, if you wanna talk about physical and emotional health and safety of students, then you could probably take out the, the, the new language. But the way it means, it's interpreted too much as just meaning the physical health, and then the green language is also talking about threats intimidation, the mental emotional health.
Right.
Um, people should be in an atmosphere free of those kinds of.
Well, yeah, but is there like a, a, um, a reasonableness standard maybe, or, you know, cause what you don't want is, you don't want somebody saying, oh, this particular image intimidates me for whatever reason. And, and you didn't do anything about it, and it's in your policy that you had to do something about it. So that's my concern, is that it's too subjective.
Well, as we go down, can we scroll down a little bit, Brendan, to the part that we started on, on A and B. Then it talks about enforcing the dress, in enforcing the dress code, the following procedure should, should be used. So that's where we get into, the principal becomes the initial arbiter, and there's your reasonable standard, there's your judgment call, your discretion, whatever you wanna call it, saying, oh, okay, is this really, you know, what is really the issue here, are you being too sensitive, or maybe the other side is being too insensitive, I mean, try and work things out. So that's, that's why all of a sudden you ended up with this big section of B there, about, uh, trying to come up with a process to determine the reasonableness for enforcement.
So. So if we're going to apply a reasonable standard, then I think we should express that also in section, in part A then.
Yeah, it's a reasonable, it's a reasonable person concludes that it's a threat.
Yeah. Communicating threats of harm or depiction of, um. Communicating threats that would put a reasonable person in, I don't know, I don't know either the right language, you know what I mean, that, I think we have that language in other parts of our, um, of our policies. Communicating. Threats of harm, okay, well, a threat is a threat of harm, that's, or depictions, so I guess a, a threat of harm.
Or reasonable depictions of harmful conduct.
Depictions of harmful conduct. Or depictions of conduct reasonably per, reasonably understood to be harmful to others.
Or would that be unreasonable depictions?
Yeah, um.
Maybe say at the end of it, directed at others, and then you could say, just to, just, uh, um.
See procedure below.
In the, you know, at the, in the judgment of the principal, parentheses, see below process.
Yeah.
Because that's really what it comes down to, it's the principal who is, you're, you're determining the reasonableness of all of this, and if the principal has a question, the principal's gonna get other administrators involved, I'm sure, that's the way it usually works, to try and, and perhaps even an, an attorney on the, you know, a phone call. Other districts, they snap pictures of kids' T-shirts and email them to the attorney and say, what do you think, let's have a discussion, so. That's all, but ultimately, it does come down to the school administrator by state statute, who's in, who's responsible for all of this in the school.
So then why did, I guess, I just wanna avoid any problems or confusion, because we, you don't wanna be in a place, as you know, where you've got potentially contradicting, um, information. So if you have like somebody saying, okay, well, the principal, the principal found that it wasn't, but he's, but it says right here, A, that he's required, or that the, the kids are, are not supposed to wear stuff that, that's, that depicts harmful conduct directed to others. And so the principal.
Well, maybe you can back up, let's back up and go to the, the line right before A, such guidelines prohibit student dress or grooming practices, which, and then you might wanna say, which, in accordance with a reasonableness standard. And then if you do that, you're putting your reasonableness clause above all of those things, A, B, C, D, and there's your squishy language to be able to say, yes, you might find this offensive, but is that, you know, as you well know, the courts have this whole reasonableness standard, is, we'd be fine if it violated that.
Which, yeah, so we say which a reasonable person would.
But let's reason.
I don't want it to be, yeah, I don't want it to be squishy.
Yeah.
I'm trying, I'm trying to make it more clear.
I mean, if we take out under A, that part that Dave questioned, aren't we sane enough in the rest of it, cause we've added all that other language to this? To get back kinda to your point that, uh.
So, so, yeah, Richard, you could probably combine the, in A, the, the green section that's highlighted with, with the, with the, with the section that was, that has, that was part of the original policy. And maybe A says something along the lines, present a hazard or threat to the health or safety of the student himself slash herself, or to others. Um, so you can kind of take some of those key words out of that green highlighted area and, and, and fuse it into the existing policy.
A hazard or reasonable, or threat of, a reasonable, eh?
So, yeah.
A threat of harm?
Yeah, so present a hazard or threat to the health or safety. So, yeah.
Right, cause we're not limiting, yeah, health or safety is not limited to physical, no.
No.
And then take the rest of it off.
Yeah, so you can probably take like from threats of harm or depictions of harmful conduct and actually insert that in, in, in the existing line above, and, and we would be fine.
Like what?
So what's that?
So it says, where it's, where the green is, yeah, right there, Brendan, where it says threats of harm or depictions of harmful, harmful conduct. And we say present a hazard or threats of harm, comma, depiction of harmful conduct, or safety, something along those lines.
Well, the depiction of harmful conduct is a part that really has me a little bit, yeah, it doesn't.
That doesn't.
Yes, I'm worried about a wily coyote with a dynamite, that's a pretty bird.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Seriously.
It's like a cartoon.
And like somebody said, that's a cartoon, and no, that's, you're gonna blow up a bird, so I'm, I'm serious about it, I just don't want us to be in that position.
I know. Right.
We all know we, we wanna get to, but, you know, depictions of harmful conduct, that is one.
That is one, yeah. The lion eating something.
Maybe, maybe what you'd like to do is leave it, uh, as present a threat, a hazard or threat to health or safety of the student himself or self, or to others in the school, parentheses. See policies five five one seven, student anti harassment, and five five one seven point oh one bullying.
Yeah. Yeah. That's what we already know, yeah.
It's going to be covered by those policies.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
What was the other one?
Five five one seven point oh one bullying. You just wanna capitalize the H in harassment.
Okay.
Again, without trying to be repetitive, this way you're just referencing to these policies you already have.
Yeah.
That's good, that's much more specific, thank you.
Anything else on that one?
Um, I have to free that out.
So are we doing anything to that number two then, and if you change it to A, B? Protected speech.
Oh, yes.
We'll double that.
May not be protected speech if it involves obscenity and then language depictions intended to incite violence, or instigate hatred.
No, I thought we did period after incite.
We did period, okay, yeah, I took out the, the foment, we've had to look up that word.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, and then that's, yeah, okay, and that's, yeah.
Got it.
Alright, cool. Anyone else?
No.
Nope, nope, okay, cool.
Any questions on five five one two? I think my next one was five five twenty two, I think.
Five five twenty two, what?
Twenty.
Five five twelve.
Fifty five five twenty.
Kevin, we've only got like four thousand left.
Yeah, that's right.
Bye, Kevin.
Alright, you bring us some back? Take care, everybody.
Have a good night.
Bye.
So fifty five twelve, there's an ins, a line inserted about this, um, the term tobacco products retail definition, I don't think that's, that makes sense, okay.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah, that.
Yep.
And then the anti harassment, we've already covered.
Five fifty five twenty is disorderly conduct, maybe that's one.
Maybe that's one.
Actually.
Can we go back?
Uh, remember how we would change the board? To what was it, we would change it to the district?
Yeah.
Is that what we wanna do in paragraph three, the district?
Which one?
Shall have the authority to preserve order to the proper functioning of its program? Maybe that's what I'm thinking.
The board, the board has the responsibility for providing.
Educational program, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that the board?
That's right, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I forgot to look for those though.
Yeah, I started looking for them actually when I went back through, and I was like, maybe overthinking. Okay, so I'm good then?
So I'm good with fifty five twenty?
Yeah.
Here. Fifty seven twenty, anybody? Fifty eight eighty?
Just a comment, Richard, on fifty seven twenty, um, similar to what we discussed, um, um, the policy, we just made those modifications, I do like when the policy references other policies. Because it just shows that there's a network of connectivity that reinforces our points, and, and in this policy, fifty seven twenty, it's, you reference fifty five twenty, which is, which is nice. I, I appreciate that when Neil makes those connections for us.
Yeah, you're gonna begin to see more of that, because people do like that.
Oh, yeah.
It's helpful.
So anyone have anything for fifty eight eighty? Or are we moving on to the six thousands? No, good there.
Anyone, oh, there's only that one.
Um, yeah, there's not much to it, not good.
Anyone have anything of the sixes?
Mm, the sixes.
Oh, it's only that one.
Yeah, yeah, what is that, seven? Oh, yeah, seven four forty. Uh, same thing, the tobacco.
Mm-hmm.
Um. The seventy four forty oh one.
I don't think so, I mean, you guys looked at this, it was interesting how, right, our world has changed, so the policies are reflecting it, but you guys feel comfortable with that in terms of?
Right.
Laws are starting to catch up, but the regulations on some of this stuff too, so constantly evolving.
Yeah. It's hyper segmentation.
Seventy four fifty? Which?
Computing devices, it seems a little out of date, but.
We still use them.
Okay.
Although we don't refer to computing devices.
Is that the right term?
Computing devices.
It feels like.
Digital devices, computer device, yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah, digital feels a little bit more.
Computer.
Exactly.
Uh, seventy four fifty five. Have you been there?
No.
So who has any questions on A, that, well, we only have three left.
Food services, anyone?
Who's a food?
Eighty five hundred?
Should, um, for this food service one, did we wanna make that actually a reference to a policy rather than that paragraph? Cause isn't that a policy essentially? Oh, it does say, policy twenty two sixty.
I guess I, I had a question on that, and maybe, I know I'm trying to go back to my notes from last time. So we're only changing things in green, right?
Correct.
Those are ads, and then the, the reds are, the crossouts are deletions.
Okay. I guess I question more just that, the district will continue to provide a meal to a student that has an unpaid meal balance, when they're coming from means to pay their meal balance, that they still continue to get lunch, but that, it doesn't look like we're changing that here, so I'm not gonna say anything on it.
Okay, are we moving on?
Is that a new session or just new headings?
New headings, they're broken.
Just no headings.
Is that new though, the request for substitutions in standard meal? Is that new?
Before you see that.
Above, if you scroll up, but, uh, keep going, hold on. The part in green.
Oh.
No, wait, sorry, it's, uh, wait, no, it's not.
Yeah, request for substitution.
It's under dietary modification.
Yep, right there.
Yep, right there.
So that's all new?
The green, language, yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think it, it just spells it out, there's a dietary need, we can't.
Oh, different, oh, so. Oh, different, oh, so it just, uh, oh, right, because dietary modification is already a thing, right?
Right.
Substitutions, I see, okay.
Allergies, etc.
Yeah, yeah, and so that's just clarifying more.
Correct.
I was gonna say, it seems weird, like, that wouldn't be in there before, but I see what you're saying, yeah.
Well, I like the addition, the addition of that, if a student has significant negative lunch account balance, I'm not to pay, sweet. Just kidding, just kidding. It's a joke. Well, you, I had to say that because we probably do have an energy balance.
You probably do. It's not, we need to pay.
No, I, I don't, uh, I don't think we, my wonderful plugged our phone a week ago and it hasn't been reconnected, so.
Any more questions on that one?
No, no.
All right, um, ninety two seventy? Minor changes, yeah. No. Ninety five hundred?
Yeah, I didn't question on this one. I think it was more questions. So, so, Richard, um, this one, ninety five hundred, has a lot of additions to it. And we're trying, I was wondering what the, the thought, rationale behind that all was.
Yeah, well, the, the whole section at the bottom, all of that green at the bottom, is all about, uh, doing research in schools. There's an increase, well, there's always been a lot of research in schools. You may have a, you know, a, a student from Cedarburg who is now at college and needs to do a research project and they want to come into the Cedarburg schools and have, and do surveys or something. You may have a teacher who has a graduate course and part of the requirement is to do research. What you're, right now, um, to my knowledge, you don't have any controlling policy over that. And it's become a problem elsewhere. After all, you're only one, in these days, you're one survey question away from being the, the lead news story in tonight's broadcast. So, you really want to make, try and get a handle, and this gives the superintendent the authority, uh, to be the gatekeeper of what kind of research can be done in schools. And all actually puts out the, uh, as you can see, the second category, A through, uh, whatever. It's essentially the rubric. Specifically, these proposals have to specify this stuff. And this is all done in conjunction with, if you went to any college that has an IRB for research and has to clear that hurdle before the student's allowed to do it, this is all in, done in conjunction with those IRB approvals. So, um, you don't want a situation where your kid scoots around that at their college and kind of comes in the back door to Cedarburg to do research, you know?
Okay, and we do reference, because that, one of the thoughts I have is there might be some privacy issues, but it does mention that, uh, may consider proposals, shall specify student privacy rights protection. I wonder if we should reference any of those policies or not? So I don't, if some of these things touch on specific data or protected information or what all that stuff might be, should we have any specific reference to that stuff in here? I know it's kind of alluded to. Or it says a proposal shall specify student privacy rights protection, parental involvement, et cetera.
Yeah, you probably want to talk about policy twenty four sixteen, student privacy and parental access to information. And that really spells out, uh, the, the privacy rights that are actually enshrined in federal law about survey questions and such, which is why you have to get, you have to get parental permission first. So twenty four sixteen is the policy that, that has all that. And that'd be a good cross-reference.
Yeah, okay. Where do you think we should add that?
Uh, let's see.
Looking at D.
D and E. But it's kind of buried then. I wonder if, maybe it was like, just C policies.
There's some, there's like encompassing language at the bottom.
I would say, uh, straight up, right, the superintendent, whoops, no, go down below, the super, the, right there, above A. The superintendent may consider proposals that meet district criteria for, for such proposals that are in accordance with policy twenty four sixteen, uh, student privacy and parental access to information. So there, you're actually telling the superintendent that they can only consider proposals that are in accordance with board policy that you have.
Should we say including that policy? Say board policy? Well, I guess that's self, that's a little bit, yeah, never mind. I think, I think it's good to call out the privacy one, because that's where you get into potential trouble.
Impressed that you had.
And then afterwards, it says specifically.
Yeah. And is there anything that we would need to do as far as, like, the digital information stuff? Or is that kind of encompassed in the privacy one? I don't remember. Like, is there anything?
Nothing encompassed in everything. Doesn't matter how you're collecting it, you know? It could be a show of hands, it could be, uh, you know, pen and paper, it could be answer the question on your computer, or, or shall I say, computing device?
Yes, you should.
It would be.
Computing.
Any of those, it, it, it doesn't matter how, what medium you're using, the same rights are across the line.
Okay, good, thanks.
Last one, ninety seven hundred, oh, sorry. Yeah, I have nothing left.
Ninety seven hundred?
Because it refers to a policy, it's always. I think we talked a lot about crowdfunding whenever we had this last policy.
Yes, we did.
Yeah. Yep, I remember that.
All right. Oh, that's all of them, right?
Yeah, that's it.
That is, yeah. Okay, so we need a motion to forward these, um, policies as amended to the full board for approval.
So, second?
Motion at a second, any discussion? Hearing done, most votes, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion passes unanimously. We're not done yet. We have to talk about future meeting dates.
No.
Uh, March thirty, twenty twenty two, it's on my calendar. All right.
Sounds good.
Go.
Move to turn.
Except the second? Yeah, second.
Not after second.
I mean, we could stay here.
Motion to the second, on favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
Brendan.
Thanks for coming. Thank you, Richard.
Richard, thanks for the help.
Have a good night, take care.
See you later. See you from the car. Goodbye.
Goodbye.
How are you?